This is a Joint City Council Planning Commission Special Meeting. And let me call it to order and let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Okay. Item number three, Council or Commission Communications or Announcements. Does anybody have anything they have to share rather with us this evening? Moving on. Item four is Public Comment. This is for items not on the posted agenda. Are there any?
We have one.
Okay. I see some other cards up there, so maybe there's some more that folks. All right, so I have two folks that would like to speak on items that are not on the posted agenda. Paul Maginetti, Paul?
Yeah. My name's Paul Maginetti. I live in San Carlos. I have a request regarding the public records for this project, that they be retained for the duration of the project, not just to the artificial timeline of two years. This is a very important project and these records should be retained for the duration so everybody can look and see what has transpired for the duration, not just a small window. That'll also help me because I won't have to be asking Greg for more records every eighteen months or so.
Okay, we'll pass that on. Thank you, Paul. Debbie?
I have a request that Brian Mora be investigated. I was privy to a training the other night, sent to me by Siskiyou County Board of Supervisors, who alerted me to a training that Brian Mora did with Sacramento on public comment and public dissent, where he not only lied in this training about what I had said in San Carlos meetings, but also conversations with Siskiyou County, things about beef, things that are completely inappropriate when representing San Carlos. There's also been complaints about Brian sending emails to partners within the projects that are going on, and I think that taxpayers who are paying him money deserve to be respected, honored, and protected. And I don't believe he is doing that for the residents and the citizens of San Carlos, of which I am one. And I was completely insulted when listening to Brian Mora in this training the other day, which is available online, and there are groups now working on it to make it public so that other cities throughout the United States can see what our own people, our own government, is doing to citizens that's supposed to serve and protect. I would like to request that there be some kind of investigation in Brian Mora's activities. Thanks.
All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on their public comment for items not on the posted agenda? Okay, we'll move on. Item five is Study Session. Review and provide general guidance regarding the Planning Commission's recommended improvement measures for the San Carlos Transit Village Project. Before we start, I just want to make sure everybody understands, we will not be voting on anything tonight. There will be no votes. We're just going to have a discussion. We're going to hear from staff. We're going to hear from anyone who would like to speak on this item. We may have questions from the dais or among ourselves, but there will be no voting. This is a study session. Needless to say, this project will be vetted, I'm sure, very, very, in a long, good way with the Planning Commission as well as the City Council. So again, I just want to make sure everybody understands, the public and all of us up here, what the process is tonight. Okay? Any questions? Okay. So Mr. Seve is our, Mr. City Manager, I guess Mr. Seve is going to start?
I actually believe the city attorney's going to make a couple of comments and then Mr. Seve.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you covered part of what I was going to cover. Tonight's a study session, and by their very nature, study sessions are agenda items where the council, and in this case, the commission, have the opportunity to ask questions of staff, and we've agendized this to provide general direction, but you will not be making any decisions on the project or any specific recommendations that you might, the council might want to make back to the commission. But it's an opportunity for both the council and the commission to get together and discuss their views on the project in a general sense, without making any specific directions or binding direction back to the Planning Commission or binding back to the City Council when it comes back to you for review. But it is, we do have the project applicant and Caltrans, excuse me, Caltrain here tonight if there's any questions, and we have a presentation from staff that you're about to hear. But I think it's important just to understand the limited scope of what a study session is, and that's why I wanted to be able to give you that general discussion. And I have, I can answer any questions if you have any clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Rubens. If you see us wandering into an area that we shouldn't be, please make sure we come back, okay?
I'll be watching for that. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seve?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, honorable Chair and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Al Seve, Community Development Director. And the purpose of tonight's study session is to review and provide guidance on the draft improvement measures. And as noted, no final decisions will be made this evening. In terms of staff's presentation, I'll provide an overview of the improvement measures and what they cover, and I'll also ask Dr. Spano, Sean Spano, to come up and talk about the mediation process between the stakeholders. Following Dr. Spano's remarks, I'll talk in more detail about the issues in the project process matrix and how some of those issues correspond with some of the improvement measures. And then, of course, we're available to answer questions. And then, of course, moving on to the study session, I'd like to make a few introductions. Colette Munier is the city's project manager going forward for the entitlement process, and she's here tonight, and so you'll be seeing more of Ms. Munier as the project goes forward. And we also have Lisa Porus, our principal planner, a new principal planner with the city, here. From Legacy Partners, we have Jeff Bird and Jesse Couch and John Ward to answer questions. And from SAM Trans, we have Brian Fitzpatrick. So you can ask any of these individuals questions or direct them to staff, and we'll point out the right person. The improvement measures were developed by the Planning Commission as part of the environmental impact report process, and during the commission's discussions, a number of important issues came up, and they weren't necessarily achieved through mitigations of the environmental impact report. And the intent of these improvement measures was really to advise the applicant and advise staff moving forward on the next phase of the project, which is the merits of the project or the entitlements of the project. And the improvement measures that are shown there on the screen were pre-developed by city staff, and then these were the Planning Commission's improvement measures, and those are also attached to your staff report. And these are some of the key issues I've highlighted there, and the red asterisks represent areas that have some overlap with the issues discussed in our mediation process. A separate mediation process has been taking place over the last few months, and the stakeholder mediation group consists of people from the GSC Board, city staff, SAM Trans, sometimes Caltrain staff, and Legacy Partners. The mediation sessions were initiated by staff to try and improve the communications between all parties and have some in-depth discussions about some of the issues that were of deep concern to the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood Association. And I can say that as part of the process, everybody's come to the table in good faith, has put a tremendous amount of time and effort into the mediation effort, and there's been thorough discussion on a number of key topics. And some of these issues, some of the key issues there are noted on that slide. Some of those up there with the asterisks denote where there is a correlation between some of the issues that were brought up and discussed at the mediation sessions and the improvement measures. And at this point, what I'd like to do is ask Dr. Spano to come up and talk about the mediation process and his remarks as an independent person coming into this process. And then what I'd like to do after his remarks is come up and talk a little bit more about those, the matrix issues, and then open it up for more discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Mayor, City Council, Planning Commission, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Sean Spano. I am a communication consultant and a professor at San Jose State University in the Communication Studies Department. The report that I'll be providing an oral presentation of is in your packet, and the purpose of this is to provide you with an update, an overview of the stakeholder mediation process. In August of 2012, I contracted with the city to design and facilitate a series of meeting with the stakeholders that we just heard, the GESC Board, Legacy Partners, SAM Trans, and the city, to facilitate a series of meetings around the San Carlos Transit Village Project. I designed the process in two phases. In Phase One, I did a series of pre-meetings with each of the stakeholders and met with them separately, establishing some relationships with them, hearing the issues from their perspective, getting their input on what they would like to see in the stakeholder meetings. We then, after meeting with each of them separately, we then started having our stakeholder meetings, and the first one was in September of 2012. We had ten meetings total, different kinds of meetings. Most of them were the full stakeholder meetings, where all the stakeholders were together. There was one meeting with just the GESC Board and city staff. There was another site tour meeting, where we actually spent a couple hours walking around the neighborhood, the site and so forth, and saw sightlines and that kind of thing. The last two meetings that we had in February were with GESC, city, and legacy, and then another meeting with GESC, city, and SAM Trans to take up the issues that were more specific to the developer as well as to SAM Trans. In November of 2012, I developed the issues matrix and started tracking the issues on that matrix. So after every meeting, I would update the matrix with what we had talked about in that meeting, identifying what the issues are, where the points of agreement, where the action steps are, and where the differences are. You heard the issues, the primary issues that were talked about in each one of the stakeholder meetings, and we fluctuated between various issues. Some new issues came up and other issues dropped out. The list that you just saw was really the core list of issues that we talked about, and Director Seve will come back and talk about those in a little bit more depth. What I'd like to do now is just to talk a few minutes about the mediation approach and my process observations. So I'm a professor of Communication Studies, so I put communication front and center, and it should be no surprise that as a professor of Communication Study, I think communication's important. I think it's really important. It's not just what we're talking about, it's how you talk about these things. And communication literally constructs relationships, it shapes decision-making processes, it helps to mediate differences, but it also works in the other direction. Bad communication, ineffective communication, lack of communication can impede relationship development, can stifle decision-making, good decision-making. So my focus throughout this whole approach was to create a climate and a context for all the stakeholders to speak candidly. What's important to them? What do they care about? What are their interests? And to be able to create a space for them to be honest and genuine about their positions, and at the very same time, to create a context for listening, to hear the other stakeholders' their positions and interests, and to do that within a climate of understanding each other's positions as well as mutual problem solving. And trying to move and gear the conversation away from polarization, antagonism, diatribe, personal attacks, and that kind of thing. So I'm under no illusion that we have established with the stakeholders total trust and transparency. After the pre-meetings, what I observed was there were serious issues of trust and transparency. The project goes back a long way. There has been a lot of communication among the stakeholders. There's been absence of communication among the stakeholders. So at the very first meeting in September, I put it on the table. I said, "One of my observations is, there is, there are underlying concerns of trust and transparency, questioning motive, questioning intent, and we need to be able to work through some of that in order to get the resolution on these issues." So as we worked through the meetings, there was some trust and transparency that was built. And again, I'm under no illusion that we are doing any kumbaya kind of singing here at all. It's not happening. There are serious differences. There are serious questions that remain. The meetings themselves were spirited. They were lively, and sometimes they were really difficult and contentious. And at the same time, nobody walked out. Nobody refused to attend a meeting. Nobody declined to participate. And from a process perspective, from a facilitator perspective, the stakeholders were committed to staying with the process. That's all I can ask. And I think they should be commended for that. I think it's a testimony of their commitment to this process. So as I move forward here, I do want to say and echo what we heard from Director Seve, that it was my sense that the stakeholders came to the meetings in good, all the stakeholders came to the meetings in good faith, ready to engage and ready to negotiate. Where are we now? Earlier in January, I started articulating to the stakeholders what might be a potential, and I'll put that in quotation marks, "endgame." And the endgame, as I envisioned it and share with the stakeholders, is that the issues matrix that I was working on after each meeting and keeping track of the issues, I would hand that issues matrix over to Director Seve, who would begin to craft an MOU. And the MOU would identify precisely where the areas of agreement were among the stakeholders, utilizing the language from the issues matrix. As I reflect back on that, the issues matrix was distributed via email to the stakeholders week before last. As I reflect back on that, we might have been one meeting too early on moving the MOU forward, because there were offers and counteroffers that were made via email to the MOU, and those should have been done in a face-to-face meeting. But they weren't, and I'm going to take responsibility for maybe pushing the MOU too soon. At the same time, I also want to say that moving the MOU and pushing it towards where are you all in terms of agreement helped to solidify, clarify the issues, and provided movement towards closure. So you don't have the MOU because it's not ready to be publicly disseminated yet. But you do have the issues matrix, which keeps a good track of the issues going forward. And so at this point, let me close by, I know that this is a study session. Any advice you have for us in terms of process going forward, suggestions for the process going forward, encouragement, should we go forward with additional meetings, not additional meetings? That would be very helpful for us in terms of the process, and whether the process moves forward any further or not. And so now I'm going to turn it back over to Director Seve, who will walk you through the issues matrix and where we stand as of today on those specific issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Spennel.
What I thought I would do is walk through some of the issues. I don't want to spend too much time on this because you're here to talk about improvement measures, and maybe I'll spend a little bit more time on the issues that correspond to some of the improvement measures that you're looking at tonight. But I thought I would talk about a number of them, and one would be Old County Road. One of the key issues for the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood Association was that Old County Road at the rear of the development be protected during construction and after construction, and not be damaged in any way or taken in any way by electrification of Caltrain or a future high-speed rail project. And so there was a good deal of discussion around that. And what SAM Trans and Caltrain have done is sent letters to the city noting that they support the idea of protecting Old County Road and trying to avoid impact and representing that position from the Joint Powers Authority, Joint Powers Board, on up to the high-speed rail, through high-speed rail as that moves forward. Another, a number of issues that don't necessarily correspond to the Transit Village Project were issues surrounding zoning, land use, and the GSC refers to it as GSC 2050. And what they wanted is an assurance that the city would not rezone their property or change their land use of their single-family homes in their neighborhood to some higher-density use or some other higher-intensity land use. So they wanted assurances from the city that that wouldn't occur. And also, there was concern about the height of buildings along the East San Carlos area here. As part of the zoning update process, the zoning was established, changing this area from industrial zone to a mixed-use zone that would allow for residential, retail, and office uses. The concern that was expressed is that the current zoning there allows for three stories of development. There was a good deal of discussion of that during the zoning update process, and the request of the GSC was to lower, to change that zoning and lower the height to two stories. Also, there was concern that if this project and other projects in the neighborhood go forward, that parkland dedication fees from this project and other projects that are developed in that area be devoted to the improvement of L'Oriola Park in connection with the City's Parks Master Plan going forward. And so that was another issue, and that the city, the neighborhood be brought up to the other standards, the standards that other neighborhoods have been brought up to. And on some of these, there was some agreement on some of these issues. City staff agreed in an MOU. In an MOU, it's really an agreement between parties, so it's kind of, you know, you give something in return for something. And in it, the city staff had agreed to some recommendations to the city council about preserving the zoning in this area to the year 2050, so staff was amenable to that, making a recommendation as part of an MOU. Some of the issues with regard to the changes on the east side, city staff had serious concerns about changing the zoning there for a number of different reasons. One, the city had just gone through the zoning update process, and there was a good deal of discussion and concessions were made for height. The height was reduced from 50 to 35 feet in that area, and other performance standards were added to the buildings there. And also, in terms of the expectation of the existing property owners there for economic value, if you were to eliminate a story of development on their properties, it could be considered a regulatory taking. Staff also agreed to recommend that the city council consider adopting something that would have the dedication fees that were collected for this development used for the L'Oriola Park in concert with the Parks Master Plan. In terms of height, one of the key issues that we've heard for some time is height, and height has its relationship also to density and shadows and light. And so there was a good deal of discussion around height. And prior to this, we had seen the applicant's proposal and the various heights and the variation in the heights there. So again, a good deal of discussion over this. The GSC had some requests for height, particularly in these two buildings here, to go to three stories in these two buildings, and then for Building Eight to go from three stories to two stories. The Legacy Partners had made a proposal as well. And their proposal was to eliminate a unit at the top floor of the rear of all three of these buildings, one, two, and three, thus lowering the height of the building all along Old County Road for those three buildings to three stories from four stories. So it'd be eliminating 20 or more feet in here so that the view would be significantly better and less impactful along there. So that's where we stand. There's, again, those two, those two offers are on the table, and we're available to talk about that. In terms of toxics, that was another issue that was brought up, and it was agreed that the cleanup efforts would be part of the mitigations of the environmental impact report. There was a good deal of discussion about toxic soil cleanup during the environmental impact process, so that was somewhat resolved. Agreement was reached there, I believe. One of the areas of significant agreement was landscaping, and this is one of those issues that corresponds to the improvement measures. And in terms of landscaping, the GSC was interested in seeing more landscaping as much as could possibly be put on the berms there to help to screen the buildings in this area. So SAM Trans and Legacy went back to the drawing board and started to look at, well, how many more trees could we get? Where could we get it based on the sightlines of the trains and such? And so there's, it looks like there could be room for more trees along the berm. And another area where Legacy has agreed to add more landscaping is in an area at the rear of the buildings. There's a service and an emergency area, about a 20 or 25-foot-wide easement along the rear of the property. City staff and Legacy Partners met with the fire marshal to see if the fire department would be amenable to, you know, allowing for fire access back there, but looking for areas where we could add trees. And so we came up with some solutions to that, and it looks like a fairly significant area in the rear here will be able to add some more trees to the development there. One of the other issues was maintenance and irrigation, and people want to make sure that if trees are planted, that they be maintained in a healthy, growing condition, and so that would be part of the conditions of approval as well, some kind of a maintenance, master landscape maintenance program, irrigation and replacement of dead trees. In terms of parking, some of the issues around parking, there's concern about spillover into the neighborhoods, and again, that's another area that where the discussions in the mediation connect to the improvement measures. And one of the issues was consideration of a permit parking program in the residential neighborhood, primarily south of Holly Street, but also, let's take a look at doing it on the north side as well, if necessary. So there was talk about the city looking, starting that process early and looking at the cost and administration of a permit, and starting to work on an ordinance to present to the city council on that. Also, there was talk about what kinds of parking would be in this area to maybe help prevent overflow into other areas of the city, such as free parking. Maybe the city could have a partnership with SAM Trans, where SAM Trans would offer the city some vehicle to have, some free parking there, parking usage, and things like that, so different free parking options. And so those were some of the issues that where there was some agreement. In terms of shuttles, one of the issues that came up is shuttles, and the current shuttle service is here. There's four shuttles that run on this side of the depot, and they kind of compete with this area with the taxi cabs that are there. And the issue is that some of these vehicles, over the years, have been going through, instead of making a turn on to East San Carlos, maybe going down some of the other residential streets and speeding and issues such as that, so safety and speeding issues with the shuttles. So again, as I noted- So again, as I noted, there's four shuttles running, I think, four or five trips a day each, and they service a number of the businesses in the area. And so the idea is that GSC would like those moved over onto the other side in their entirety, and that this area be eliminated for any kind of vehicles, taxis or shuttles, and that the, all the shuttle service would be on the east side in the new multimodal station area. And SAMTrans has agreed to study the issue with the city and share the costs of studying the issue. And the issue for the city might be, you know, are there any unintended consequences with moving those shuttles over in terms of level of service, circulation movements, and driveway movements? Maybe Cherry Street, you know, will it impact Cherry Street when the new light goes in? And actually, you know, taking a look at that, developing some analysis before the city makes a decision. So that's where we are with that at this point. School impacts were another issue that was brought up in terms of, you know, the number of students that would be here and in the impact to the local school district. However, the city's hands are really tied on this issue because there's an Assembly Bill or a State Bill 50 that says that when you pay fees, the fees that the state asks, then that results in free, in full mitigation of any school impacts, and the city can't ask for any other mitigations. And finally, pedestrian crossings. There's a concern about providing crossings here and at San Carlos Avenue, and particularly at Cherry Street. And in, this is another area where there's a connection to the improvement measures in that there's been a lot of discussion about serving pedestrians and bicyclists across El Camino, but also for the residents, trying to get this direction and residents from the Greater East San Carlos to downtown. And so there was agreement that, to improve the pedestrian crossings at coming this direction and at this intersection here and at Cherry Street as well, and this would be improved as part of the East Side Connect project. So I went into some detail about some of these, the progress that was made on, during the mediation process, and I tried to show you where there was some crossover in terms of the improvement measures. And staff is available to answer any questions of the city council or the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Seve. Mr. Collins? Would you, thank you.
Can you hear me now? You mentioned a little bit about the trees and that they would maintain them. Is there a thought to the height of those trees? Because it seems like if they grow too high, they're going to be higher than the buildings. And all the work in putting the, building the project so that the buildings don't block the height, or the views, rather, would, could be wiped out by these massive trees. So I'm wondering, you know, what sort of plans are being thought about to put in the kinds of trees that are easily maintained and trimmed and don't get so high that they, that they create a wall of their own, so to speak?
Well, yeah, there was a good deal of discussion. I don't know if this thing's working, but there was a good deal of discussion about the types of trees and how tall they should be. And I think the initial intent, and I might be corrected, but I think the initial intent was to screen the buildings, the view of the residents on the east side to the building. So to try and get as many trees as possible to screen the buildings so that you create a, really a landscape buffer there. So there was some discussion about, you know, what kind of trees? Should they be columnar, very tall, redwoods, or other kinds of trees? And in terms of the landscape maintenance plan, that would be something that, and the species of trees would be developed as part of this next phase, and that has not been developed yet. But there would be a fairly detailed landscape plan with maintenance and irrigation and replacement in it.
Mr. Marshers, excuse me, Ms. Collins.
I believe what Al is talking about is absolutely correct. The idea of planting as many trees as possible is to screen the buildings because, from the resident's point of view, they're actually losing all of their view of everything to the west. And so rather than looking at buildings, they would much rather look at a forest. And if those trees go a little bit higher, there may be some shadow issues, but the reality is, I think they'd rather look at trees than to look at the buildings.
Thank you, Ms. Marshers. Go ahead, Ms. Collins.
All right, thank you. In the discussion of the shuttles, you mentioned, you briefly just touched on taxis. Is there a thought to leaving them there or moving them over as well? Because it seems to me that if taxis are picking people up, they may also be going through the neighborhoods.
Yes. The intent of even with just the East Side Connect project was to move the taxis over to the multimodal station area and have an area there, a new area for taxis on the west side. So that was an earlier intent to that earlier project, so yes, that was it. But the intent of the East Side Connect project was to leave the shuttles, move the taxis, but leave the shuttles.
Okay. That's all for now.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Mr. Marshers?
I have one more, Mr. Seve, and that's considering the drop zone of trees for electrification. I was at the electrification, Caltrain Electrification EIR, and one of the concerns that I had after attending that meeting was they seemed to anticipate the idea of a drop zone where limbs or trees would not be able to interact with the wires. And so has that been taken into consideration when you're looking at expanded areas for trees?
I'm going to ask Brian Fitzpatrick to talk about that specifically.
Members of the council, members of the commission, Brian Fitzpatrick, Real Estate Department Manager for SAMTrans and Caltrain, Mr. Marshers, in answer to your question, I think we can say that, and hopefully, one of the GSC guys want to say that we disagree on this, is our goal at Caltrain is the same as the GSC's goal, which is to make sure that every tree we plant isn't taken out by electrification. So right now, our engineers are reviewing the plan for basically two primary concerns. One, Mr. Seve had referenced sightlines. Lines of sight for the engineers are extremely important when they're operating those trains for safety purposes. So any trees that get in the way of those lines of sight, there's a slight bend in the rail there, we won't put them in. Secondly, we will be reviewing them for ensuring that they meet the future electrification criteria. So those are the two criteria that'll be looked at by Caltrain's engineers right now.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Thank you.
That's the goal.
Thank you. Other questions?
I have a question about process.
Sure.
For one, with this meeting, and two, when, you know, we separate and have our own. Just to be sure that we're not expected to bring up all our questions and issues right now at this meeting, if we have more at...
Oh, absolutely. This is just, what we're basically looking at is the improvements. There's 10, 11, 14, I'm not sure of the exact number. We're looking to ask questions specifically. If we have questions about those improvements, then the public will speak, and then we're going to have discussions, and we can give opinions on some of those improvements. I believe that's the process.
So if I understand you correctly in what you said, and looking at this agenda as well, the focus is on these improvements?
Absolutely.
But when we get to bigger and broader questions, we should save those for that time?
Yes, because we're going to have, the planning commission's going to have, I'm sure, multiple meetings, and we're going to have multiple meetings about all these items, yes. We're not going to have a, this isn't the one, one out, one and out, not at all.
Right, okay, good. So I had a question regarding when the, when the talk was made about the impact of parking and traffic to some of these residential areas. If it was ever considered, and I'm just going to throw this out there, it may be totally abhorrent to some folks, but the idea comes to mind of at least looking at and exploring the idea of McHugh, and then I forget the street that's south of McHugh, or south of East San Carlos Avenue. There's McHugh, there's...
Montgomery.
Okay, so there's East San Carlos Avenue, and then there's Montgomery. And if, if the first block of those streets from Old County Road to the first intersection, and on most of those, I think that's a stop sign at those intersections, if that were made a one-way street so that taxis and other vehicles like that, the shuttles and so forth, would be, could not come to the Caltrain area on Old County and then turn down either one of those streets. So if the east side's interested in looking at some concept like that or not, it seems to me if East San Carlos Avenue, on the other hand, were left as a two-way street as it is, then that becomes the street with the traffic, and that's primarily industrial, it's the backside of the residences without any access for the most part.
Questions? Let's see if we can keep it to questions, and then we'll have a discussion about different ideas and things after that. Mr. Marshers again?
Can I, I just want to clarify a little bit from what council member Grocott said. There will be additional meetings, but in talking to Mr. Seve, the next meetings will actually come once the project is submitted and because there is no project. Now, that was a concern for the planning commission at one point, and probably still is, that we would be able to comment on things because we tried to keep our improvement measures focused around the environmental impact report and not all the other issues that come up with the project itself. But it sounds like, in talking to Mr. Seve, that we're not going to have that opportunity in between this meeting and the project submission, that I think the planning commission was kind of considering as a way of expressing their concerns about other aspects of the project. So I'm not sure how that's going to work.
Yeah, I'm not either, and that's one of the things I was having on my mind. I've got some other questions, by the way.
We're certainly going to get, why don't we, why don't we ask specific questions? And then after, if there's concerns or discuss, or opinions or ideas, we will get to those tonight. We will get to those. But let's see if we can stick to questions right now of staff.
So I'm sorry, I meant that to be a question.
Okay, I just didn't hear it. I didn't hear it in that sense, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, so the question was, was anything like that explored at all about any or all parts of streets being one-way?
No.
Okay, all right. And you had mentioned something about, I just want to get this clear, when you were talking about height, that that's, you get into that and it gets prickly because it's looked at as a regulatory taking? Is that what you said?
Yes. On East San Carlos, specifically, the request was to go from three stories to two stories on East San Carlos Avenue.
Oh, I see, I see. That's an area that's already zoned and...
It's already zoned, there's an expectation of usage.
Gotcha, all right. Just wanted to get clear on that. And you made a point about, in the negotiations, L'Oriola Park, that monies would go towards L'Oriola Park. Was that, I'm concerned about that language. Is that looked at as only L'Oriola Park, or, you know, what if we, one of the things we have with the reserve money, for instance, is the idea of buying additional parkland. And so the question comes to mind, if the city looked at additional parkland and bought something on the east side, this, the language wouldn't limit only to L'Oriola Park. It could also be used for, if the city found additional property, bought it, wanted to, you know, tear down a building and put in some green space, it could be used for that as well?
I think that was the intent of the neighborhood, yes.
So we might want to look at that language or whatever. And when you were pointing out about the pedestrian crossings, did you include the, something that would allow for, say, you know, commuters that are walking to the train to get to work from the north side, how they get over Holly Street?
Yes.
That's being looked at as well?
That would be improved, yeah.
So some kind of improvements being looked at for that as well?
Yeah, crosswalk improvements.
At grade?
Yes.
Could anything else be looked at?
There's been discussions about bridges and raised pathways, but from an engineering standpoint, it would be nearly, not impossible, because, you know, you could buy anything if you had millions and millions of dollars. However, from an engineering standpoint, you'd be looking at a multimillion-dollar, very difficult, complex project.
Is that because of the height of the grade separation and clearance underneath with vehicles and all that?
That's correct.
Gotcha, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? And again, I do realize that the planning commission provided most of these improvements, so I don't expect you're going to have very many questions of staff, but I still keep looking over, I want to make sure I don't leave you out of the discussion. Mr. Collins again?
Yep, a couple more. With respect to parking, this just relates to parking in general and crosswalks and just the general flow of traffic. A friend of mine who used to live in San Carlos moved to Colorado several years ago, and he's an engineer by training, and we got together recently, and he came up with the suggestion of potentially putting in zipcar stations at the train station. And I realize that when I, when I drive by the station frequently, even in the middle of the day, in the middle of the week, that parking lot is about half-full, maybe two-thirds, but it's never full. And I'm thinking that we're, as I recall, we're going to add parking or additional parking spaces, but they're going to be moved south. I'm wondering if the whole zipcar station concept could be incorporated into this project, at least have SAMTrans look into it. I think that would encourage, well, encourage a lot of things, you know, less, people driving less, and it's, the idea is catching on a lot of different places. The other idea I had was with the, with respect to crosswalks in San Francisco in the financial district, it's very, it's very common to have an all-crossing light so that it, traffic is stopped in four directions and people can cross diagonally. I'm wondering if that might not be a very inexpensive way to possibly solve some of those traffic crossing issues. You know, you could do it at San Carlos and El Camino, you could do it at El Camino and Holly Street, but it seems that, you know, the traffic lights could, could be adjusted so that at certain times of the day to allow that to happen. So that's just a couple of things I thought might want to be incorporated into, in looking at the project.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond to those quickly, or would you prefer not?
Yeah, I'm trying to keep it to questions, but I'm not doing a very good job, am I?
That's okay. Those were, I would say, those were good enough for questions. Those were good questions. I think on the zipcar issue, yes, I think SAMTrans could look at it. I think it's something they, that they could explore. On the issue of the four-way crossings, we've looked at that historically at El Camino and San Carlos Avenue, and it seems really desirable, you know, just to have everybody cross at the same time and protect everybody. But a couple of issues. One, Caltrans has certain regulations and models, and that's out of their wheelhouse. So you'd have to have them modify what they normally would allow, one. And two, from a traffic engineering standpoint, you're stopping traffic in all directions at the same time, and so that has an impact on level of service backing up to other intersections. And so it has a much wider impact than keeping some of the traffic moving and stopping others. And so for those two reasons, the idea has been sort of dropped from an engineering standpoint over the years, but it has been explored in the past.
Thank you. Mr. Olber, do you have questions?
Oddly enough, Mr. Mayor, I only have some suggestions I want to make when we get through the discussion phase.
Okay, good. Ms. Clapper?
No.
Okay, anybody on this side, any questions? Okay. All right, thank you. And like I said, we will have opportunity for comments and suggestions and all the others. So at this time, I'd like to ask anyone who would like to speak to fill out a speaker's card. I have five of them, but I will certainly take more, and we'll hear from the public. So if you could queue up. First is Bonnie McClure, followed by Dimitri Vandellis. And if we could keep the comments to about two or three minutes, that'd be great.
Do you want us to do comments and questions, or just questions now?
You can say whatever you want, Bonnie.
Oh, okay.
But I'm just trying to keep it to around three minutes or so, if possible. Thank you.
All right. Bonnie McClure, I had a question, and that was about... Bonnie McClure, I had a question, and that was about transparency in the stakeholders. I didn't see a list of the stakeholders printed out, so we know who it was, was representing the western side of San Carlos. The comment I have on page two of the issues of the March 13 revision was on item number one, desire to have city confirmation that there be, there will be no city-initiated residential land use changes in GESC between now and 2050. I really feel from a land use viewpoint that that's too far out, our general plan goes to 2030. I don't think that we should be locking ourselves in beyond the 2030. I think 2030 is a good date, it goes with our general plan. And you might want to have some changes along East San Carlos and along East Holly or wherever, or you may want to use a couple spaces there to buy homes where the people are willing to expand L'Oriola Park. So I really would like to see you leave at 2030 for this holding, so it's uniform throughout the city on that. And this, I know it isn't covered here, it's in the initial impact report, and that's, we still would like to see actual low-cost housing incorporated in this building. I know that they have a fee that they're suggesting be paid instead, but that's an ideal place for low-cost housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Dimitri, followed by Glenn Gellino.
Hi, it's delightful to see members from council and planning commission all in one place, it's a big treat of the evening for me. A couple of things, I just wanted to make sure that you guys had a chance, and we'll spend some time looking at the GESC suggestions for improvements that we distributed and emailed. One thing that I want to make clear is that we've been earnestly and honestly going over the issues with the parties involved. And, you know, what we're requesting, and it is articulated in the email, is that from our perspective, this is a worst-case scenario what we're proposing. So what I want to make sure is clear is that we're, I appreciate the comments that Mr. Spano brought up, but it is in the interests of Legacy and Samtrans to hold back a bit in terms of what they're willing to do, and I think it's incumbent upon both of these bodies to sort of force the issue on some of these points, particularly as it relates to height and density. In terms of L'Oriola Park improvements, are, we have a number of suggestions, it's really about what could we do, Mr. Grokot mentioned, perhaps expanding, one of our suggestions was to actually expand L'Oriola Park itself. Landscaping, everyone's in agreement, it is a concern about electrification, we'll see how that plays out. What we are really looking for in terms of parking and to alleviate some of the issues that we see happening once the multimodal station is built and the parking lot is basically moved much further south, is to change habits. If Samtrans continues to charge for parking for commuters, the temptation's going to be too great to use our city streets, the streets in front of our homes for all-day parking. So our suggestion is to have a 12-hour free commuter parking at the train station. If it turns into an issue, perhaps that could be restricted to San Carlos Belmont and Redwood Village residents. We also are in favor of zipcars or any other type of loaning stations, not only at the Samtrans parking lot, but perhaps in the development itself, since it is counting itself as a transit-oriented development, alternative methods of transit would be, I think would be a good thing. Shuttles is something that has been an ongoing issue ever since they were moved, and as a matter of fact, I have pictures, but I don't have a way to show them on my way over today. There was a shuttle that while oddly enough, there were no taxis, the shuttle did not pull in and was blocking the street partially, the north-south street. This continues to happen, we can have study after study, but after the number of years that we've been facing, the problems with the shuttles, there really is no way to solve it other than to move them. There's a new multimodal station, Samtrans is getting federal dollars for it, all the shuttles could be moved. It's been brought up by Samtrans that it could be a safety issue to move the shuttles, however, I've seen shuttles on the western side, I saw two buses pulling in and out of the train station, so I'm not sure how the addition of a few shuttles would create an enormous safety burden, even now. I would suggest that it's a good faith bargaining position that Samtrans actually moves all of the shuttles over before the project is built. Street crossings, I think it's a wonderful idea that was suggested by Mr. Collins. In Washington DC, they do that all the time where you can go across, whether or not that will be feasible, I couldn't say, but certainly we need improvements at every location where pedestrians are going to cross. The bulk of residents would be north of Holly, we need to ensure that we're not going to have accidents, we're going to have kids crossing the street, we really need to make sure that those crossings are beefed up. And that's basically it, so if you take a close look at what we're proposing, what I want, I want to make sure that we're not, that you're seeing that our proposals really are, you know, what we would consider the minimal amount of things, not something to compromise against. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Gellino? Next speaker would be Sam Hertzberg after Mr. Gellino.
Good evening, members of the council, planning commission, my name is Glenn Gellino, resident of San Carlos. I received the e-packet that was sent out earlier this week and the staff report. I'd like to call your attention to something, I think it's quite evident by this photograph up here and perhaps a little bit clearer in your actual staff packet. If you notice, there's not much traffic on El Camino or Old County Road, this overhead photo was obviously not taken during rush hour traffic. I would like to call your attention, however though, to the traffic that is already backed up on Holly Street on the east side. I think that this is an impending disaster for the city, I think that that problem needs to be resolved and dealt with before you build or approve this massive project. In conjunction with the people on the east side, I also think the massing of the project is too great, the densities are too high for the community that we live in. I would suggest that, I don't think the majority of the people would want this high density. I think something scaled back a little bit would be more appropriate for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. After Mr. Hertzberg, Tim Hilburn.
Good evening, city council members and planning commissioners, just wanted to comment on a couple of the points that were raised. Regarding shuttles, that was an issue, shuttles have not always been in that location, they've kind of emerged there over the last seven, eight years. There's about four different types of shuttles that are using that area, and the problems with them are idling and there's a lot of gas fumes, as well as going, folks going down the residential streets and where you have children playing and things like that, and speeding along basically because they're trying to get from point A to point B. Regarding the issue of heightened density, it's been an ongoing issue since the beginning of the project and was raised multiple times in the IR, we're trying to find something that's a winnable solution for everybody that we can all live with for the next 99 years, assuming we're all around for the next 99 years. And on some of these issues, like the shuttles and heightened density, really think that your direction to Samtrans regarding what the city wants would be very, very helpful. We've been in lots of discussions over the last five years of IR and mediation sessions, and we need the city to weigh in and provide direction as to how to make this fit. PAMP was three times the size, I was in on those discussions, it was reduced by two-thirds to make it fit within the city. The same thing could be done to make this development fit, but the city needs to provide the guidance and direction to help make that happen, to make it fit. Regarding, we've been having an outstanding issue recently with transients at the train station, and I was just driving by there today, and there's a lot of garbage all on the east side of the train station as you come out and approach Old County Road, there's cigarette butts everywhere, batteries, folks have been, you know, using the bathroom and garbage, and that area just needs to be cleaned up. And we did get an email from Samtrans that they're working on it, but just to bring it to your attention, we have a problem there with transients. And one more thing, just clarification, the L'Oriola Park, what we're asking for, the city has its own city master plan for its parks, and there are plans for L'Oriola Park, and we're asking, as you add all these new residents to this particular community who are going to be using L'Oriola Park, that you implement, that you make sure that the park-in lieu fees go to L'Oriola Park to pay for improvements at L'Oriola Park or acquisition of lands, because there are acquisitions of land that are called for, as well as potential citywide benefits like community center, swimming pool, there's a variety of things that could be done, particularly in the area between Old County Road and the parking lot where it's really kind of an eyesore, and it's a generous piece of land that could be a welcome addition to L'Oriola Park. All we're asking for is not only that the in lieu fees are, from this project would be placed there, but that the city would commit itself to making the improvements at L'Oriola Park in this, as identified in the city's master plan, a priority for the city. That's what we're asking for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Following Mr. Hilburn, Ben Fuller.
City council and planning commission, thanks for having this meeting tonight. Merrick Griselli, you're doing a great job for your short time up here, so you're doing the questions well. There's a few things I'd like to touch on tonight. The first thing is that these mediation meetings that we've been having with Legacy and Samtrans have definitely illustrated a particular line in the sand that they have and that we have, and there's quite a distance that we've come up with. And as has been stated by the last two speakers, and I'll reiterate again, it is, I think, at the behest of the city council and the planning commission to bring those lines in the sand together for the best uses for the city. And I think that responsibility will be falling on you guys, so that's going to be a very important decision. In regard to heightened density, the first thing is that if you look at this picture, I'm glad you have this up here, and this is something I've mentioned before, it's really important that we use the land use policies, the guidelines that are in the general plan to make the decisions about heightened density and the effects that it has on the surrounding neighborhood and the city as a whole. And if you look at those buildings and the size of those buildings compared to all the other buildings that you can see, you can see a massive difference. And is that really what the general plan is in alignment with? And I would say no. The other thing is, in our responses to both the draft IR and the final IR, it's, it was really important that we came up with different alternatives. The only alternative presented was a revised massing alternative, really, the only quote realistic one. I'd really like to see the city council and the planning commission come up with several other alternatives, one of which is to break up the buildings, especially north of Holly. We don't necessarily need four buildings, what about six or seven buildings that are smaller? And within those buildings, you might be able to have some green space where you can have some bicycle paths where people can move from north to south. There's a lot of really good options that could come up in regards to this, and I think we're really backing ourselves into a corner if we're staying with that. Second thing is transportation. Almost 25% of the cumulative transportation is going to be caused by this, the residential component. We're looking at about 2,500 daily trips. One thing Mr. Grokot came up with beforehand was, before this is built, we need to figure out a way that those 2,500 trips are going to be addressed, especially on Holly Street. The next thing is the financial impact analysis. I discussed this several times, I went to the EDAC committee meeting, the final meeting on this, I kind of felt this was rubber stamped. One of my main concerns is that the financial impacts in regards to the fire department are zero dollars. If you look at the FIA, and I implore you to do this, the, it says there will be absolutely no impact, zero dollars on the fire department. That's a huge, huge mistake. Why are they putting in fire lanes behind this project if there's going to be no fire trucks showing up? So that's something that could really come back and bite us, so we need to be careful about that. And so, you know, these are some things that, you know, I would really implore you to look into, and especially going back and just saying, you know, please, please, let's look at some other alternatives as far as the heightened massing. There are a lot of other alternatives out there, so thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hilburn. Mr. Fuller?
Good to see everybody, thanks for coming together. I want to bring up a point about what I think is a false equivalent or the fair and balanced thing. And one way to look at this is that you just split the difference between what we've put on our offer and what they're putting on theirs, but I want to go back to what Dimitri said, which is, the best thing for us really at this point is no project, and we know that's not plausible and likely, so what, we put something that we thought we could live with if we had to. Ideally, you guys would go beyond that, but that's sort of the minimum that we think we'd be comfortable with. I want to respond to Bonnie's point. I think all you remember, a few of you remember, about four or five years ago in 11:30 PM meeting with the planning commission after everyone had gone home, when Bonnie's suggestion, which had been rejected by EDAC, was picked up again and voted 5-0 by the planning commission to rezone our neighborhood through a form of, and I know I'd get a nickel, if I'd get a nickel for every time somebody used the word eminent domain, I'd be rich, but a form of eminent domain. And thankfully, some members of the city council who are here overturned that result and our neighborhood remained. And part of the reason that we've gone for this GESC 2050 idea is to stop this just constant assault on our way of life in our neighborhood. We want some assurances that if this monstrosity gets built, and I don't mean any offense to the folks who are the developers or Samtrans, but if this large building gets built, but it doesn't mean that it's just eventually going to result in the demolition of our neighborhood. So that's why we put in this idea to maintain our zoning through 2050. Now with that said, I did hear the mention, and I want to acknowledge, that Holly Street is a little bit of a different thing, and I know you guys have to solve that problem, and so maybe there's a way to parse out Holly Street and come to some sort of resolution with getting folks to the 101 that still allows the single-family residential zoning to be maintained for the rest of greater east San Carlos. I want you guys to think about that. And, you know, the same person, Bonnie, you mentioned that our view is a pimple, you used that exact term, you know, we have babies strolling up and down Old County Road with their parents, looking at those beautiful hills that are the Pulgas Ridge, and that's hardly a pimple in our eyes, we think it's really important. And Scott, I know you said that we'd rather look at trees than buildings, but we still want to see some of those hills as well, and some of those hills will be visible if we don't build this thing too large. Couple more points, I do want to say that the negotiations have been done in good faith by some of the parties, Legacy has tried to deliver some things. I've been more concerned about Samtrans, I haven't seen, I mean, I like the folks at Samtrans, but there are four major issues, none of which have gotten resolved. Issue number one is parking, their solution is to not give us any free parking for commuters so far and to basically have us do a residential parking permit program, so we bear the entire weight of that one. Shuttles, they, they'll study it, but they don't want to move the shuttles yet. Transients have popped up everywhere, and this whole thing of maintaining the train station, I mean, Old County Road, the east side of Old County Road is, it's a garbage dump, okay? It's a total walk of shame, there's no maintenance at all. If you look at the city side, the west side of the train station, it's relatively clean, but the east side is totally landscaped with a million cigarette butts littered throughout. So my question is... is, if SAM Trans can't maintain their own train station, clean it up, all of the trees along the berm are dying, I mean, how can we trust these guys, and they're not offering us anything, to actually do the right things in the future? I think we have to really push them to deliver something. It's going to be raining cash at SAM Trans from this project, 900,000 bucks plus all sorts of benefits in addition and beyond, and the unspoken financial gain that they get every year based on the profit of this project. Raining cash. We want them to share some of that with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Another speaker card I have, Mr. Krab.
Yes, honourable members of the Council and the Planning Commission, I was intending to speak tonight, but I just want to make one quick, well, maybe two quick points. A lot of talk about reducing density in this project. This is transit-oriented development. The basic concept of transit-oriented development is density near transit villages, near transit centers. And if you reduce the density down to, you know, whatever level it ends up being down, you're basically compromising the concept of a transit-oriented development. And so I would really like to strongly suggest that we try to maintain that density. Now, that said, I think there is work that could be done in terms of changing the massing of those buildings to make them more attractive to the neighbors. And I think that I would like to see Legacy really try to work on that, as the previous speaker had mentioned, maybe break it into more buildings or do whatever else. And lastly, I was happy actually to hear Al Savay's little summary of some of the issues that had come up, and that there were in fact agreements on some of them. And I think, you know, maybe the first thing to do is to figure out exactly what those agreements are, and I'll list them, and maybe we can kind of go beyond those now, and so we can say, those are settled, and now let's just work on the few items that are really controversial, and maybe save everyone a lot of work and effort and pain rather than coming back every time and saying, you know, we're worried about pedestrian crossings. Well, it sounded like there was an agreement on pedestrian crossings. So if that is in fact the case, or if there is a MOU, then let's move on and look at some other things. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Krab. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? I'm not inclined to have other public comment later on, so if you want to come back up, I'll give you a couple of minutes this time, okay? Thanks. I want to make sure everybody gets a chance. Thank you, Dimitri.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. There's just one thing I forgot to bring up. The southernmost building is three stories. It's essentially as high as all of the largest buildings, and we have formally requested that that be turned into a two-story building. Of the two buildings that have some commercial and perhaps office space use, our suggestion has been if, for the city to decide what's more important, if they want more office space than both the first and second floor could be converted to office space if that's more important. So that was my only comment.
Sam?
Just one last point to make, and that's that, as identified in your general plan, transit-oriented development is anything within a quarter mile of the train station. You don't have to put all your eggs in one basket here and call it your only transit-oriented development. Wheeler Plaza is a transit-oriented development, and you could have others that help meet the needs. And again, affordable housing is also a need in this city, and, you know, there's going to be a need to address multiple things over time. If heightened density was to be reduced in any way here, there are opportunities to provide transit-oriented development in other areas as well, to meet the city's needs for folks to live close to train stations. I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Tom?
Thank you for allowing us to come back. No, that's all right. One of the points I forgot to mention was the element of noise. One thing that was omitted in the EIR due to the high-speed rail was the fact, and the tests couldn't be done now, but in looking at the blended system and the fact that, you know, we're pretty much for sure going to have high-speed rail trains going up and down the peninsula, 100-plus miles per hour, I would like to see some kind of model or some kind of study done somewhere, wherever high-speed rail trains are going right now, as, you know, in regard to the amount of decibels that are created, especially if they're going by some kind of wall type of structure like that. Because, you know, when this happens, and it's not that far down the road, the residences are going to have major impacts. And even though it will be electrified, a train going by at 100-plus miles an hour creates a lot of noise. And so there was nothing addressed in the EIR for that, and I'd really like to see some kind of model or something and some questions by the City Council and Planning Commission on that, because I think we're looking at a lot of potential noise from that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
So I want to say that the process has been good, and we appreciate, we appreciate everything that you guys are doing to try to listen to us. We also appreciate the things that Jeff and Jesse and Brian and the others have been doing to try to talk with us, so thank you. It comes down to what's in it for us. So as a president of Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood Association, if we walk away from the table after six or seven years without getting things, without having clear benefits for us, and just having impact devoid of extrinsic mitigation and mitigation of impacts, then we've lost. And I think you guys know that we have unlimited energy and unlimited time, and we've shown this, and we're going to continue to show this. And on the other hand, if, we'll live with this thing. If something reasonable can be built, and if you guys can come to, because you are now going to have to make a decision, if you can come to something reasonable, and we don't mind these guys, we can work with these guys. Just make it reasonable, and then we'll all be able to live with it. Thank you.
All right. And again, as we said before, this is just a study session. No decisions will be made tonight. We're just going to have some comments. I appreciate all the comments made by the public, and...
Mr. Mayor, may I ask staff one quick question?
Sure can.
You may not be able to answer this right now tonight, but one of the speakers did mention about, in the fiscal impact analysis, the fire impact was zero, and I just would like to get whatever perspective staff has on that.
I can offer a perspective. In the fiscal impact analysis, there was an annual amount that was established for the payment of public services, and I think it was $130,000 a year. But I would encourage you to go back, and we can, I can confirm that number and provide that to the Commission and the Council.
So in other words, there may not have been something tagged to the particular line item of fire services, but you're saying there was a lump sum that was identified that would pay for all sorts of public services?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Follow-up question on that. $130,000 a year fixed in for a certain period of time or life of the lease or what?
Well, what it did is, the fiscal impact analysis looked at what the project would generate in terms of cash value for the city, and then it subtracted out the costs of services to see if there would be a surplus after you, you know, looked at, here's the dollar amount you get from it, here's what you take away from public service, is there still a surplus value that the project would generate? And it determined that there would, in perpetuity, every year out, I think it was a 30-year study, I think, not having it in front of me. But it went out, you know, decades and looked at a year by year by year with cost of CPI adjustments over the years.
That's where I was going.
Yeah.
Because we all know these things don't stay stagnant.
Right.
Right, okay.
Okay, so we've had some questions. We've had some public comment. We've had some suggestions. What I'd like to hear from folks, if they have any comments now would be the time, or suggestions on these items, the improvement items that I'm looking at on page, I guess, two of the staff report. And so it's open. Who would like to start?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a number of suggestions, but I wonder if we could perhaps each offer a few and then pass the baton.
Sure. Why don't we stick three, and then if you have more than that, we'll come back to you.
Okay, may I start?
Certainly.
Thank you. I'm going to make my comments in the context of things that I would be interested in seeing the Planning Commission review process study. But obviously, I'm only one voice, and so after I say these, there may be reaction from the rest of my colleagues. You guys will have to figure out what that all means. Starting off with probably the most significant one, I actually would be interested in, given my concerns about the impact from an aesthetic point of view on the character of the town, I would actually be interested in an evaluation of whether or not it's possible to limit this complex to three stories. And I say that as three stories flat, but that's just because I'm not an architect or a designer, but basically smaller than what I think it was contemplated. The second thing is, I would be interested in when the Planning Commission reviews and thinks about the parking issues. I think it's great that there's been a discussion about possibly triggering a permit parking system if we need to do that, but frankly, based on what I know of those systems, that'd be like the last choice I'd like to see us go down, the last thing I'd like to see us do. So I would ask that some good creative thought be focused on looking for alternatives short of that. One thing that I will just toss out there, but by no means, you know, I'm not trying to be directive about this, I actually wonder whether or not part of the, one of the speakers talked about SAM Trans reinvesting some of the profits they're taking out of this in the community. I actually wonder whether one of the things that we might look at is to see whether it would be feasible for a substantial portion of the parking, the transit parking, to be free, at least during commuting hours. If it's free and it's near the train station, that removes the incentive for people to park in the residential neighborhood, because that would be a longer walk than parking in a lot. And let's see, the third one, last one for now. I am, I would like some thought paid to what happens, I just want to make sure that if some of our solutions to dealing with the congestion on Holly Street involve increasing the width of Holly Street at El Camino, I'm not exactly sure how that would happen and whether it would happen, but if that's something that might be in the plans as part of solving the congestion problems, I just want to make sure that this project is designed with easements and whatnot so that that can actually be done. And we wouldn't be in a position to have any look at tear-down buildings, which of course we can't do. I basically don't want to bottleneck us on potentially solving Holly Street congestion problems by implementing this project in a particular way. Thank you.
Okay, and we'll return if people have other comments. Who would like to go next? Mr. Marsters?
I just, I don't want to make too many comments, but the first thing I want to ask Councilmember Albert is, and it goes back to the process, and that is, would you like to see us discuss these issues prior to the project submission, okay? Prior to having a project in place, okay? Are these the types of issues we should wait until the plan comes back, or are these the types of issues we should begin to hold hearings on in the next month or two?
I'm going to have to, I guess my short answer is, I would have to ask you to think about which you think is best. I'm not, I would be okay personally if the Planning Commission decides it wants to hold some preliminary hearings before the project is submitted. If you're determined that you don't need to do that, and you can evaluate these things after a project is submitted, I'm okay with that, too. I'm sort of focusing more on the issues rather than the process of how we get there. But if your view as the subject matter experts is that to deal with an issue, and if you feel it's an issue that should be dealt with, you need to go in a certain path, then I would encourage you to go in that path.
Can I get staff to comment on this?
Yes, I mean, I'm concerned about that approach. I think that, you know, we have a number of months to kind of move this project along, and there's an expectation on everybody's part that we move the project forward in some way. To have study sessions without a project that is proposed by the developer, a new concept, which I believe the developer will come up with after hearing this meeting and after mediation, then you would have something to respond to, a concrete proposal. So staff would prefer that you respond to the resubmital as opposed to having study sessions, which is very costly from a staff resource perspective. And again, you'd be talking about things that might be solved by something that is proposed by the developer. We could do it that way, it's, but staff would prefer not to do it that way, and that you can have as many meetings as you want on the project, and we can have special meetings, we can have additional meetings if you like. Even then, though, I think there's a cost issue from a staff resource perspective to some extent. So that's what we would prefer is that, let's wait till the developer resubmits a concept, then we'll bring that forward, and you can start to, you know, hash it out with the actual project.
Okay, and again, let's see if we can stick to the items that we're talking about, the improvements, and if there's other items that need to be talked about with staff. I know Council at its meetings brings them up, and I'm sure Planning Commission would bring it up in the same way. Is there anyone on this side of the dais that would like to say anything or comments? David, want to go?
I just observed that as far as the discussion in the papers for today about dealing with Old County Road through letters, that is not terribly comforting to me, both because the letters are completely non-binding and because the letters are extremely vague and non-committal, even as they are. So I just wanted to make a general observation about that. And then I also just wanted to comment that I noted in the mediation portion of the agenda that there was some discussion about a pool attached to L'Oreala, Community Pool. I'd never heard that before. I would certainly want to know a lot more about that because I didn't think they were creating community pools anymore. I thought those just didn't work, and so they stopped doing it. So I was kind of surprised to see that in there. So if that's going to be something that is proposed by staff, I'd like to, in the future, know a lot more about what the thought process was with respect to that, understanding this came out of the mediation and not out of any discussions with staff.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Grollcock?
I'm going to go ahead and put this out there, because I'm a little bit confused, quite frankly. I'm just looking all the way back to 1999 and 2001, both years when I ran campaigns for council. And especially in '99, I remember talking about this site, not as transit village, but just as, there was talk at that time about this site and putting housing there. And I did some campaign material where I put it out and said, you know, is this really what you want, San Carlos? I don't remember there ever really being a discussion of, you know, we're going to put housing on this site. And so when does that come up? Because we've talked about during the EIR process, we're not approving a project, we're just approving an EIR. Now we're talking about these, this list of measures, which assume that there's this project that has this kind of mix to it. Even one of the people from the east side here mentioned, I think it was Sam, about, you know, you don't have to have commuter-style housing or whatever it's called, TOD housing at this site. There's other places in the city that it could go. When do we address that question?
Well, I mean, my philosophy on anything is, if you own a piece of property, you can propose to put anything on it at any time, and I think that's what SAM Trans is doing. I mean, that's just a simple answer. You can always propose it. It doesn't mean it's going to go anywhere in the process.
Well, so I think at some point, we as a city and as planning commissioners, as city council, elected officials that represent our citizens, at some point, before they spent a lot of money on architects and everything, which they've already done, it seems to me we would say, no, this doesn't fit our general plan. It doesn't fit what we're thinking of as a city. We don't want housing along the railroad corridor. We want, we would rather see that redeveloped as it was before the GRESEP was put in, which is commercial. And I have a question here about, because we're talking about density and, you know, it's been brought up about density and so forth, and what I've heard is, well, we have to have this density to make it work, really, if it were a Really, if it were a commercial project, would you have to have that same kind of density to make it work? Because commercial real estate leasing rates and everything are completely different than residential. So to me, it seems like a key question before I ever, ever want to look at all these other details.
Well, again, I think the project is in front of us. If you choose-
There is no project, we've been told.
The process is in front of us, how about that? And if you feel there shouldn't be housing, love to hear it, and you keep saying "we", it sounds like you don't feel like there should be housing, and that's fine. That's what we like to hear, because that's what everybody needs to hear. They need, everybody in the city, as well as the developer, the staff, and everybody else. If that's your opinion, that's fine. We all have opinions.
Yeah, and to explain my comment, and the reason I use the word "we" is because I do talk to other people. And I can't tell you how many times I've heard from folks in my, you know, as you know, I spend a lot of time in the downtown, especially in the morning and so forth, and people have just walked up to me and said, I don't understand this process, just like I just stated, I don't understand this project, process. Why are we talking about housing so close to the train? It's insane. So that's why I say "we".
All right, well, your point's well taken. Did you want to have any, a couple of more things, because you've already three shots? Or not? I mean, it's up to you.
Yeah, for now, that's it.
Okay, fine. Anyone on this side trying to balance it off, go back and forth?
Through the mayor, I think we'd like to provide a little additional comment-
Sure.
About Councilmember Grocott's issue.
And I think this is just more, to address the process question that Councilmember Grocott had, and this, I guess I've been around long enough to remember way back then, too, in 99 and 2000, so I think it deserves some clarification. When the grade separation went in, there was, there were some commercial uses there. I don't think there was any residential use in that vicinity. And those went out, and they were, they were part of the project. And the idea was that there'd be a plan of development brought forward through the city process for that land, because it was seen as, I think the council back then understood that it was a vacant land, and there was some opportunity for redevelopment of it. It was, and it's been vacant ever since. So in, what, just in shorthand, this, what, that discussion resulted in the resolution 2003-79 that talked about the planning for the railroad corridor, and it was a comprehensive look, it looked at the whole length of it. There was some discussion, I think that, I may be getting my, the timing wrong, but before that, I think there was some, there was a west side specific plan being discussed that was going to identify certain uses on this property, and that kind of rolled into the 2003 resolution. And then fast forward to 29 or 2010, the General Plan Advisory Committee, which re-looked at the zoning for the entire community and included this area. So the west side specific plan never was adopted, it resulted in a resolution, and then when the city was required by state law to look at the general plan, this was looked at, and housing was one of the choices there. I think it's actually was what came out of the general plan, and Mr. Savay can correct me if I'm wrong on that. So we looked at it. Now, that's not to say that from a policy direction, you might not want to give direction for this area. I mean, it's possible for the council to look at different types of uses there, but right now, the general plan allows for this type of development in general. It doesn't, the general plan doesn't say this project has to be approved, or that you have to accept all the assumptions and all the facts that came through for this project as to height, density, and other issues, but it is an allowed use in the, in that space that's, that's part where this project is being proposed.
Thank you, good summary, I appreciate it.
Okay. Anyone on this side? What, Mr. Marsters?
Okay, and I'll limit it to three.
Oh, yeah, we'll get you-
But they're kind of-
We can go back after three, I'm just trying to make it three at the first crack.
They're kind of broad. Mark, I agree with you. I think height is something that really we need to discuss, and the Planning Commission really did not discuss that as part of the EIR, and I think that that is a real concern to many of the planning commissioners. Noise, I think, again, there's still the issue of noise, and I think that is going to be a concern with any project coming forward, how noise is addressed. And the third thing that I really have is the general plan. And when I actually look at the project that has been proposed, and I actually have 14 different land use elements in front of me right now, where I have serious questions about whether the project that's been proposed meets any of those 14 general plan elements. And so any project that comes forward has to meet the elements of the general plan. And so my advice to the developers is that you need to start looking at the general plan and look at it from the perspective of the Planning Commission and the city council. Are we going to find the project that you bring forward meets the ideals of our general plan?
Okay, thank you for your comments. Ms. Clapper, do you have any comments?
I guess I don't have anything to add to the existing improvement measures or the other items that have been coming out of the mediation. I look forward to seeing plans that do support a good parking solution, good pedestrian and bike access at all of the intersections, and provides some density housing in an attractive format, so that this becomes economically feasible and politically doable as a project. I think this is a project has potential to add a great deal of value to our city in terms of putting, you know, putting the, a different image out there that will, over the next 10, 15, 20 years, be used as a yardstick for how other property owners go about making improvements to their properties, to provide both better commercial space, as well as a lot of other opportunities for different forms of homes for people, places to live. So as long as it's consistent with the general plan, I am, feel that we're headed in the right direction, as long as we keep resolving these issues. It's not going to be perfect, but I think it's important that we do use that land for a better value for the entire community of San Carlos, as well as the region.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anyone on this side? Michael?
Bonnie mentioned low-cost housing, and I know that that's an issue with a lot of people here in town. I don't necessarily think that the 15% ceiling of low-cost housing should be implemented, but I do think some level of low-cost housing in this particular project should be incorporated if it does move forward. The two issues of height versus landscaping, a few comments have kind of alluded to the fact that they're the same. If the landscaping is tall enough, then the height of the buildings doesn't matter, and I don't think that's the case, and I'm sure the GSC does not agree with that either. So I think we need to keep those separate moving forward when we discuss those issues. I agree that the consolidation of the shuttles should be moved to the west side, and I know just from my former commuting days where I remember that that was an issue, and I can't imagine living near there and having to endure the daily nuisances that they create. And I don't see any reason why Caltrans and SAM Trans can't find a way to move that along quickly. And I just wanted to mention-
Mr. Mayor, just, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to make sure that, just put us back in the ground rules, because what we're talking about is giving, kind of discussing general guidance and having a conversation between the city council and the Planning Commission, but we don't want to be talking about what we'd like necessarily, how the project's going to come forward, and make opinions about what different items we would like to see in the project. And the reason for that is you're going to be considering it later. We haven't seen the actual project. I think you could talk about, these are things that I'd like to have us look at, but I think there's a couple of statements there I just felt a little uncomfortable with, I wanted to kind of bring a direction back to the ground rules of a study session.
This is not an easy situation. This is not something that works well, as Mr. Grocott indicated before, and it's a difficult thing, because, like you said, what are we talking about? So if, I think as Mr. Rubin said, I guess basically what our comments should refrain, and again, no criticism of you, Michael, because I probably would have done the same thing if I'd gone ahead of you, is to try to be more, more general in this, as opposed to specifically saying I'm for this or against this, or something like that. So, sorry to interrupt, go ahead and finish your comments, please.
And I'm not saying that I'm for or against the project in any way, shape, or form, but, and I just wanted to comment on Mr. Grocott's comment about housing and possibly moving this to a commercial focus, but as we all know, housing is an enormous issue in San Carlos, and I think any, any housing project that's brought before the Planning Commission and the city council should be seriously considered, because everyone wants to live here, it seems, and is willing to pay quite a price to live here. And we have very little land to build any housing on, and this is really a viable option for some people. Maybe not some of you that would want to live in this location, but I'm sure we've driven up and down 101 many times, saying, who's going to live in those houses they're building right next to the freeway? And yet, there's always people living there, so.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. Collins?
Well, after all of this, I think my questions are coming down to project questions rather than process questions. There are a couple, there are lots of things I would like the Planning Commission to talk about, but it sounds to me like this is not the right format, since the project hasn't formally been submitted yet. Do I understand that correctly?
No, I think this would be the, this would be the forum to share any thoughts you would like to see explored by the developer, by the Planning Commission, by the staff as the process moves forward. So to the extent that you have thoughts about the project that you would like to see vetted further down the road in the process, I think you want to share those tonight.
Okay, well then, let me, let me go ahead, just, excuse me, a few things. I sit on a couple of housing boards. I think anybody that knows me knows that I'm a big advocate of housing. I don't think we have enough. I would like to see more people be able to live on the peninsula. Unfortunately, there aren't that many places to build anymore, and this is one of the only places left in this town to build. But having said that, one of the things I would like to see explored as we go forward is what is the minimal acceptable, you know, level of profitability in this project? And I think I want that obviously done on an independent basis. Even though I want more housing, I'm very sensitive to, to the impact of that housing on people. You can't sit up here and not be impacted by what, what people say about their own community. And I think we have a lot of people in this town that care about their neighborhoods, particularly in this neighborhood, since it is surrounded by a freeway and a railroad and access roads and that sort of thing. So we have to do a lot of careful planning. One of the things I thought of that I would like to see explored is the idea of, you know, we talk a lot about this parking issue, and I think that one of the things that could be incorporated, I'd like to see it looked at, is the idea of just putting up signs that say, no parking in neighborhood, no commuter parking in neighborhoods. I think signs like that, even if you didn't do parking permits, which I'm not necessarily against, they really have a deterrent effect, it's sort of like sticking a sign out in front of your house that says that you have an alarm system, when you may not. By the way, I have an alarm system, and I have a sign. In case anybody's having any thoughts. The other thing I want to see as this process goes forward, and I've seen it in the history of this town, is that whenever there's a project like this proposed, I want to see alternative designs, not necessarily alternative projects, although everybody else is free to suggest those, and I'm not averse to looking at them. I really would like to see alternative project designs. I'm not aware of any more than one or two right now, and one of, one of them apparently has been rejected out of hand, which I happen to like. So that's one of the, one of the key things I'd like to see as this process goes forward, is I want to see as many designs as possible for us to consider. I just think that that's a very important part of this process, because there's probably or possibly a project designed out there that hasn't been designed, that everybody will look at and agree is a pretty good idea. So that's one of the things I'd like to see. The last, last thing I was, just a, is a question. Mr. Rubens, you brought up this resolution that was passed in 1993. Someone was kind enough to email it to us today, so I printed it out, and I was reading it. But the way I understood, were you saying that it was or was not binding as part of the general plan? Is it incorporated in the general plan?
Yeah, that resolution was looked at as part of the General Plan Advisory Committee, and it was, the language of it was incorporated within our current general plan.
Okay, that's, that's good to know, because it specifically says in here that one of the guidelines is to promote mixed-use pedestrian, pedestrian-friendly development, which to me implies housing, along with commercial enterprises.
And resolutions, resolutions are always something that could be changed by city councils that are, after that resolution. They're different than an ordinance, which also could be changed. The general plan is harder to change. That's the constitution of development, it's intended to be hard to change. And so the fact that it was incorporated in the existing general plan has some legal significance.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Collins. Angela, do you have any comments on the improvements?
I do. Sorry, let me, okay, there we go. Really, my only comment at this point is that I know that for me, and I can't speak for everybody on the commission, but I think somebody may share my opinion, we really tried our best through our many, many, many meetings to try to limit our comments to the merits of the EIR, with the understanding that once the entitlement process came about, we would be able to have more than just a discussion on the improvement measures, because I think, and I want to say, I might be quoting myself word for word, but one of the things I said prior to the approval of the EIR is that, and the improvement measures, is that it doesn't come close to addressing the challenges that I have with massing and height in particular, but also some of the conformance with specific general plan land use items, and the view, as well as some significant noise and parking issues that I just don't think have been adequately addressed. We were asked very specifically, over and over again, to consider the merits of the EIR, and that's what we did. I am hoping then, in our continued meetings, that we will have more of a chance to discuss the merits of the visual quality of noise and parking more, because that is certainly what I have brought, all this aimed to do.
Okay, thank you, Angela. Jesse?
What I wanted to, first say, I think that the mediation processes, I guess, helped us a lot as well, because there's been many, many, many meetings about many issues. And it's, I think, important to keep, you know, that communication going. It looked like with the matrix you guys have worked on a lot of, a lot of things, and that's helped out a lot. I'm going to agree with Angela, I think that we really just focused on the merits of the final FEIR and kind of moving this process along, but yeah, we've got a lot to talk about, really. But just keep, everybody just keep that communication going, I think it's so important, you know? Everyone has a stake in this, so to continue that process. I, kind of going, kind of looking out a little bit, I would like to see some sort of affordability aspect kind of looked at again. As, as a professional that does this for a living, I mean, it's getting really bad, and very few people can afford to live here. So I'd like to see that maybe examined, the financial aspects of that, and see if we can kind of look at that a little bit more.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, may I clarify quickly?
Sure.
With regard to the process issue, the next step in the entitlement, the entitlement phase does not limit the planning commission or the council from addressing any, anything you want to, in any parking, height, visual impacts. So you're, it's unlimited in terms of your level of discussion or what you're interested in? Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Mr. Seve.
I just had a couple of, the items for me that I think that planning commission is certainly going to be vetting and will be vetting is the height. I think that's an important item that we need to discuss. It's a very important one. Parking permits. I will make the comment that I go to occasional giant games, and those are after hours. And I can, I can't guarantee, because I don't live in that neighborhood, but I'm guessing there's a few folks that park in the neighborhood. So parking permits may not be such a bad idea, or maybe, depending, but I think that needs to be vetted also. And then, one of the items at number 15, noise attenuating construction materials, I think that needs to be discussed in that. I want to make sure that whatever we put in here, if there is a project, that it's all doable. And if it's not doable, then, you know, it's great to ask for the moon and the stars, but it has to be something that can be physically done. And so, that's one of the items that I think needs to be discussed. And the other items, you know, brought up, and again, I'm not cutting this off, I'm not the last one, I'm going to go around again if someone needs to speak. I think all of us have spent a lot of time on this planning commission, probably more time than we have at this point. And that's usually the way it works. And in the future, you'll probably spend an inordinate amount of time doing a lot of more of the heavy lifting. And then it comes to us, and we'll do some lifting. This isn't going to be any kind of a one-meeting deal. I can guarantee you, it isn't. And I'm going to try to make sure we get a lot of input from the public, as I did tonight. I think that's extremely important. As I said in the, I think in the press, this is the biggest, excluding the hospital, this is the biggest project that I've seen in my 30 years here. And so this is, you know, very, very important. And I don't think anyone should doubt that any of the people up here, any of the 10 of us, are taking this in any way lightly. And we're going to, want to work hard on it. Other comments? Yes, Mr. Grocott?
Just to tag on something you said about the sound attenuating materials, building materials. I met with Jeff and Mr. Ward and one other fellow in the council's office over here a while back. And that question came up, and they, Jeff just said point-blank, "There is no such thing." There's no material, if you're talking about materials for the exterior of the building to mitigate the noise that might be reflected into the neighborhood, that doesn't exist. But that said, I think, one of the concerns I have, and it came up when, if you remember at the, at our E I R meeting for the council, there was a fellow who got up here, he didn't have really good language skills when it came to English, because he was, I think, of Chinese heritage and something like that. But he, he gave a really interesting presentation, all about noise and sound and so forth. And I was very intrigued by that, because, as you know, I've studied architecture in college and practiced it. And I especially remember courses I had in college about noise and attenuating noise, dealing with noise as it impacts in the environment. It's almost more of a mystery than it is any kind of science. I would like to see more, especially as a project, if a project's going to develop and something more concrete's going to be presented to us, I think that really needs to be looked at. Because the things that that fellow was talking about have merit. The idea of, you know, noise, noise is a little bit like a liquid, in the sense that if it can find a place to punch through and get to the other side, it will. So when you have gaps between buildings, what happens to that noise and how much it's accentuated because it's being squeezed through a space and then gets punched out the other side? That could have an impact on the western hills. And then, the noise that gets bounced off of buildings and sent over to the east side, I almost think that's a mystery. It's a little bit like when we put in sound walls along the freeway and then find out, oh, we've dealt with the noise in the neighborhood next to the freeway, but now, all of a sudden, 15 blocks away, we've got people complaining about noise. Or I'll give you another example. When the airport does engine run-ups at night. I used to live in a part of San Carlos, nowhere else in San Carlos, but this one area gets hit by low-frequency noise, and because you have to look at the sound wave. So, like I said, noise is a very critical issue, and I think there needs to be a little bit more science, as it exists, applied to whatever project comes forward.
Okay. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things, some of which have been touched on before. I just want to reiterate, find a little bit different angle on a couple of them. Protection for Old County Road, that's something that various people have talked about. And I believe Mr. Silverman referred to the, I shared your opinion about the nature of the letters that were being offered. But I also understand, I think, the limitations that the other side, you know, feels it's operating under. I would hope that the issue of thinking about how we could protect Old County Road through this review and entitlement process would be something that the commission would look into. That would be definitely something I'd be interested in, as an alternative perhaps to the letters. Landscaping, the one thing I wanted to add about landscaping, I'd like to see some thoughts spent on whether or not, in addition to sort of specifying the landscaping, do we have, do we have the ability as part of the approval for this process, for this project, to assign responsibility for maintenance of it? Various people have alluded to the fact that the maintenance hasn't always been that great in some areas. The city itself has been a little bit behind the curve on maintaining some of the, some of the things. So not just the definition of the landscaping, but also the maintenance of it, is an issue I'd like to see explored. And then, there was one dimension of this that was touched on very briefly by Mr. Seve. It has to do with the Class A office space. And I'll just throw this out there, speaking for myself. I actually would love to have more Class A office space in San Carlos. I think we've talked, many of us have talked on many occasions, that there's a dearth of it in town, and it actually would provide significant value to the community to have more of it. That said, given all of the stress that, and stressors that this project will be putting on the community, I for one am willing to forego some of that, or all of it, even if that became necessary, on the, on this project. So I'd like that looked at. In other words, not take it as an absolute must-have, that it has to be configured that way. Like to see some alternatives explored. I actually had one other thing.
Go ahead.
Can I, you want to hit me with the gavel?
No.
Okay.
Only if you go with one more, then I will.
Okay. I guess my piecemeal approach won't work here then. No, I'll just do this one more. There's been a lot of discussion tonight about noise, and I support all the comments that have been made by my colleagues. The one additional thing that I'd like explored, and I have no idea whether we could include it in the entitlement process, that's why I'd like it explored. We essentially have a project here that is going to be brought forward by legacy, but clearly, Samtrans, Caltrain are intimately involved in this, because it's being built on their land, okay? And Caltrain in particular is a potential source of noise generation, from running trains. So if it were possible, I'd like to see explored whether or not requirements could be put on the project so as to not, I'm not trying to, since some of those, like electrification and high-speed rail, we don't know when and if and what nature they're going to take when they're actually formed. I guess I'd like to see whether or not it's possible to structure the approvals in such a way that we don't rule out future noise reduction possibilities that might become necessary down the road. And again, I have no idea whether we can actually include that in a project brought forward by legacy. I look at it as legacy and Samtrans, Caltrain, but that may not be exactly the way it's looked at.
Other comments? No, go ahead, David, please.
One, I just wanted to note, as far as the-
Get to the mic a little, thanks, David.
I'm sorry, the noise reduction construction materials came from the consultant, the, I think I refer to him as the noise guru, actually indicated that such materials did exist. I can't, I can't speak to that, since I'm not a noise guru.
I told that.
But perhaps we should, if there seems to be a difference of opinion between legacy partners and the noise guru, perhaps we should get some more input as to what these construction materials are and how they work and what they do. But he seemed pretty confident that they did exist, and that's why we included them as an improvement measure. And then, as far as the shuttles, I'm just kind of curious going forward, and might be helpful, as to whether or not, if the, if one of the main issues is just using the residential streets, if there's some way to prohibit commercial usage of the streets during a particular time. I mean, that seems like a potentially easy, easy solution. Although I wonder, I mean, the shuttles exist now. They seem completely independent of the project. So, you know, I guess I would also like to understand better what we could do as part of this project to affect an already existing, seemingly independent issue.
Karen, did you have your hand up?
Yes. I just, in response to, I think it might have been your comment about the parks and the community pool question. I know this came up at the council strategic retreat. Councilmember Olbert and myself brought up parks. And I, although it's not part of our six-month strategic plan, I believe it's like somewhere a year from now or something. Anyway, looking at visioning for the parks overall, but one of the things that was discussed was an option of a, of a community pool. So, as that, as that process is being worked on, then try to make sure that the planning commission is kept up to date with those things. So hopefully that wasn't a surprise. There's no clear intention to do that, but it's an option that is being looked at. And in regards to the park improvements, while I see that L'Oreal Park has, you know, a footprint right there on the east side, I think that maybe as we look at, where does it make sense to invest those parking and loo monies? That some of it may be, there may be some spaces that are actually on the west side, but very close to this new development, so that people could be able to use, which could possibly include repurposing some of the city property here around City Hall, so that we spread the use of the parks across a variety of areas. So I was just asked that we stay somewhat open-minded about how that money actually gets used.
Okay. Mr. Marsters, do you have some comments?
I do. When you, I'm going to address for a second a couple of things. Some of this is, in dealing with this project, is the history that goes along with this project. And for many people who live on the east side, the shuttles are a result of the raising of the berm. And a lot of the issues that are sort of, issues that people don't necessarily understand a lot of times, were impacts of raising that berm and were, the neighborhood was told over many, many years, that these issues would be solved when the property on the other side of the rail corridor was developed. And so, when you, when you hear people talking about things like shuttles, when you hear people talking about things like parking in the neighborhoods, those are all issues as part of this project, simply because for years and years, we've been told by city staff that these issues will be addressed as part of this project. So that's where a lot of that concern, and why these things that don't seem like they're part of this project keep getting dragged into it, is because that's been the history of the project. The second thing, as far as noise and the, the trains that run up and down the rail corridor, we talked about all kinds of different ideas about decreasing the noise, one of which, for example, was the whistle. Many, many years ago, the suggestion was made that the city take on responsibility for the safety along the tracks. If it does that, the train operator, the conductors of the train, the engineers, essentially will not need to blow their whistles in San Carlos. That decreases the noise significantly along the rail corridor. And noise is an issue. So that's another option that can be considered as far as reducing the noise along there. And the last thing I'm going to say is, I'd really like to see the mediation continue. I don't know whether it's a decision that the city council makes or not, but when I look back at the projects in this city that have really got the community's support, and I don't mean just, you know, one area of the community, I mean the entire community, it's because the developers and the neighborhoods and the people in this city have worked together and compromised and came up with a project that everybody can get behind.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, well, seeing none. This has been a difficult meeting, because it's hard, because our city attorney just won't let us talk about certain stuff. I can't, again, not to repeat myself-
Doesn't he work for us?
Yeah, I know. I appreciate you folks coming out tonight. Appreciate you folks coming out tonight to deal with some of these issues. I think in some ways, it's given some good information to all parties involved in this. I, Mr. Marsters, I hope that the mediation continues too. And we hope we can get, adjudicates or agree on certain items, and perhaps less items to talk about, perhaps not. As again, I can't say it enough, this is not going to be something that's going to be done in five minutes. And staff knows that, we know that, you know that, the citizens know that, East Side knows that, everybody does. And I want to make sure everybody understands that we're going to be talking about these items a few more times. So, anyway. Yes, Mr. Collins?
Apologize, I just was trying to think of my last comment. One of the things that I would like to see come out of this process, and I've mentioned this before, both to legacy partners and the staff, is that once, once we get through this preliminary process, that one of the things that the legacy partners people do is, and I want, I would like to see it, hopefully part of the improvement measures, is to hold community meetings. There have been a lot of meetings. East Side's had meetings, you've had, what, 10, 12 meetings? There have been private meetings. There really haven't been any town hall-style meetings where they have appeared, say, at the library, and, or some other venue, maybe Hiller, I don't know. But some venue where the public in general, where the city in general, is invited to make, to comment on this project and possibly give suggestions to the developer that might enhance or improve the project. We've had a lot of input from people who are immediately affected. But when, once it's done, this project is going to affect everybody. Everybody who passes through the city, everybody who lives in the city. Those people ought to know what this project's all about. And one of the things I've talked about all along is, if we had community meetings or town hall-style meetings on plastic bags, I think we can have plastic, or we can have town hall-style meetings, at least one, maybe two, maybe three. Depends on who shows up and who's interested on this project.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. On that note, we will, again, have our, your meetings, you'll have your meetings, we'll have our meetings. We'll be working on this project. So, thank you very much. Thanks to all the folks that came. Hopefully people are watching. Thank you. Adjourned.